Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 6th meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Dish.
Here.
Councilmember Harrison.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Malik.
Present.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Here.
Councilmember Ackman.
Here.
Councilmember Briggs.
Here.
Councilmember Cornell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
May the motion, please, to approve the agenda move by, councilmember Dish, seconded by councilmember Watson, discussion of the agenda. All in favor, all opposed, the agenda is approved. Other communications today from our city administrator.
No, mayor.
Thank you.
No.
In the absence of introductions, we come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers both here and online will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Tom Stolberg.
Mr. Stolberg is joining us on Zoom. Mr. Stolberg, phone number 534. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Tom Stolberg calling from Lower Town in Ann Arbor. Happy 2025, the year after our bicentennial. I'm calling about CA 3, which covers affordable housing at 1140 Broadway. As some of you know, I'm a real estate professional. I started in real estate, new subdivision development, including rezonings in multiple communities. I'm also a landlord here in Ann Arbor. Later on, we'll get to an ordinance about landlords and fees. So I know it has its own public hearing, but I'll just mention briefly that I do support B3 and that my small property management company does not charge any fees, none. It can be done. Today is January 6th. I've been reading and listening to people determined to remind us of the truth about national issues. I'd like to remind us about the truth at 1130, I'm sorry, 1140 Broadway, the biggest private developments since Briarwood and our city's biggest affordable housing scandal. I'll remind you that had the exact same site plan had been approved as a PUD, the developer would have had to provide 93 more units of affordable housing at that site, or alternatively, pay about $9 million into the Affordable Housing Fund. The site was own PUD, the comprehensive plan recommended to PUD, but the developer was allowed to create a stitched-together PUD in disguise that served but one purpose, to cheat on the affordable housing. That PUD in disguise included elements that did not meet the letter or intent of the law, and was only approved after a two-week delay granted on acknowledged false pretenses. That gave time for a mayoral appointee to buy an adjacent property, which reduced the number of votes required at council from eight to six, and thus the mayor and his then allies were able to cheat us out of 93 units of affordable housing by a vote of seven to four. That development came to market at double the rents the developer said he would, by the way. So citizens sued the city and the city changed its zoning laws part of the settlement of that lawsuit, and the results of those law changes included something that could have given us more affordable housing at that development when the final phase of the development was revised. But that new law change was superseded by city council after only one year.
30 seconds.
Prior to the development's provisions. Up citizens wanted a dense mix-use development with affordable housing in our backyard. We got cheated. The 93 income-qualified residents that could have lived there got cheated. Let's not forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Gehringer.
Hi, everyone. Hello, council. And welcome to councilmember Malik. Welcome to council. My name is Brian Gehringer. I am the executive director of Ann Arbor for Public Power, and it is our understanding at A2P2 that the Phase 2 feasibility study agreement with NewGen Strategies and Solutions will be tabled today in alignment with our request. Of course, it's impossible to know how you all are going to vote, but I am going to make comment as if my understanding is correct. I want to express deep gratitude for this decision. I consider this a moment of significant trust, collaboration, and, dare I say, repair between A2P2 and the city. I'm confident that our upcoming dialogues on this matter will confirm that both parties are acting in good faith and that there is a path forward that everyone feels good about. I also want to express deep gratitude to the many dedicated A2P2 volunteers whose years of experience have guided us through this moment, and to so many of our supporters in the community who heeded our call to encourage a momentary pause at this juncture. It is the community who has enabled this best-case scenario, which I think we will now jointly pursue, and it is extremely important that an agreeable way forward is found, and soon. To all those who agree with our campaign to dump DTE and toward democratic control of our electricity, we at A2P2 do not take this moment lightly. We do not take the confidence of the community lightly. We intend to move forward with both confidence and care, so thank you for trusting us. I understand that there are DTE customers in southwest Ann Arbor who are without power as we speak and who will be throughout the night in this bitter cold. So those of us who have lived in Washtenaw County a couple for a while remember a couple winters back when DT's supreme negligence left so many of us in the bitter cold for so long, and that somehow the communities around us with public power fared much better. We also know that the storm, that that storm is just the tip of the iceberg. We need to prepare for much worse, and that preparation does not coincide with DT being our electricity provider. They have lost that opportunity. They have lost our faith. If DT is still in charge of electricity by the time a truly catastrophic event occurs, then Ann Arbor will face the same fate as did Texas and Puerto Rico in the recent past, effectively abandoned by their private power companies at the most crucial life-or-death moments, and as a consequence of decades of disrepair. But we can do better here in Ann Arbor, and in moments like this, I do think it is palpable. So let these alternate possible futures be a motivation for us during this critical moment, and thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Sargent.
Good evening, council, and Mayor Taylor. I am Dr. Lauren Sargent, co-founder of Washtenaw 350 and a supporter of Ann Arbor for Public Power. I live at 2815 Amber Way in the 3rd Ward, and tonight I want to commend you for taking steps towards a Phase 2 feasibility study, including the prudent step of tabling it until it's really well crafted. The study needs to assess our prospects for a municipal electric utility for all of Ann Arbor to replace DTE. I learned from my active FDR Democrat parents that that which is universal and comprehensive is inherently more just and equitable. Electricity, which is increasingly essential, should not be a commodity, full stop. We are pleased that you're taking the next steps to carefully and fully assess the costs of municipalizing, including the more difficult-to-measure factors of going concern and stranded assets. We need good, reliable numbers to best position this community to take control of our energy future. At a time when the oligarchs and neo-rober barons are rubbing their hands with glee as they prepare to eviscerate the remnants of the New Deal, it is more important than ever that this community take the power that we can into our own hands, literally, in line with our climate and justice goals, and we look forward to continued collaboration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Woodring.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. My name is Greg Woodring. I am the president of Ann Arbor for Public Power. I'm once again here to extend my gratitude for the collaboration that you all have shown in navigating this difficult situation. The amount of money that this council has put forward for the Phase 2 municipalization feasibility study is very impressive and is very well received. We very much appreciate the seriousness with which this council is pursuing this absolutely necessary project of moving away from DTE and towards democratic ownership of our power. We simply want to make sure that all of the issues are well taken care of by the time we get to 2026. Nobody wants to make such a large investment and put us into not the best possible scenario to make sure that this is a success in 2026. If you remember the Phase 1 feasibility study, you'll remember that the engineering estimate was pretty much the same across all different scenarios, around $200 million, whereas stranded costs and going concern range from $80 to $800 million. The largest factor of the uncertainty of the study are around these two costs, and as we understand it today, while $1.7 million are going into this study, only $37,000 are going towards investigating those questions. We understand that there's differences of opinion that may be, that need to be resolved on the best way to pursue answering those questions. However, it does raise significant concern for us, and so that is the source of our anxieties, and we hope that together we'll be able to work through these and move this forward quickly so that we can get the answers we need and move forward in the best possible scenario. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Garber.
Thanks, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber, 2nd Ward. Nice to be here with you tonight. Like Ms. Sargent, Mr. Woodring, and Mr. Gehringer, I'm going to speak on the NewGen proposal. A few technical points to add to what you've just heard. I think we're fine with NewGen delivering three separate valuations using book value, RCLD, and income based on the field survey, but as Mr. Woodring said, the problem arises when it comes to considering the intangible costs, and there's simply nowhere close to sufficient funding in this, in the study to deal with all the outstanding legal questions around those. NewGen can't do any more than lay out the city's possible exposure. That brings us no closer, closer to actual valuations, which is the main purpose of Phase 2, and could actually harm the city's position. And we've been told the legal work must be done outside the study because we don't want DTE to know our strategy. We certainly don't. But the Potomac Law Group's work can be subject to attorney-client privilege, I believe. That would protect it from FOIA. That's what Pueblo, Colorado did a few years ago. In this study, their Phase 2 legal analysis by the Denver law firm of Ferris and Woods remained confidential. The conclusions are built into the report and into the valuations, but the analysis is completely redacted. We can do the same here, and I think it's important to build the legal analysis into the study because it can then inform the valuations, which otherwise are likely to be just as uncertain as in Phase 1 and won't bring the public any closer to a real understanding of what the cost will be of taking this measure. So, yeah, so this study isn't, should be, should give us some valuations, but it's not really designed for that. Instead, what we'll get is, well, using this method, it could cost one, two, three, four, or five, depending on A, B, C, D, or E. It won't deliver bottom-line numbers, which is what the public needs, as I said. True, only the court can deliver a final bottom line, but the court looks, the court looks to the city to make its case. The city can put forward an offer, but without a study to back it up, it won't be worth much in the court of public opinion, which is where the key decisions will be made next year. A few words about NewGen. It made some mistakes in Phase 1, which we documented in a report by Chris Bisdock, which we sent you last year, and basically it raised some possibilities that weren't reasonable and built those into its valuation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Hershkowitz.
Our high school students learn about Holocaust historians like Raoul Hilbert and Deborah Lipstadt. We hope they learn about Holocaust revisionists as well. They need to know a French high school history teacher named Paul Rosignier, commonly referred to as the father of Holocaust revisionism. He was the first writer to question the initial atrocity reports coming from inmates who were interned in the same concentration camps as he was. A former communist and lifelong pacifist, Rosignier resisted the National Socialists after they occupied parts of France. In particular, he began to provide false documentation to Jews who wanted to travel to Switzerland to avoid the anti-Jewish measures initiated by the occupiers. As a result of his activism, he was arrested and deported to Buchenwald camp until liberation in April 1945. The contrast between what he himself had experienced in Buchenwald and what other former inmates published about this camp made him a critic of their literature. The stories he heard did not comport with what he witnessed in the camps. As an example, he claimed that camp prisoners who collaborated with the SS were responsible for many of the atrocities committed there. He dismissed reports of homicidal gas chambers in Buchenwald and said so in his book, The Lies of Ulysses. It is now admitted by all mainstream Holocaust historians that there were no such chambers at that camp. One of the former inmates at Buchenwald was a man named Eugene Kogan, whose book, The Theory and Practice of Hell, was critiqued by Rosignier. Paul documented Kogan's distortions, exaggerations, and lies, and for that, Kogan sued Rosignier in a Munich court and lost. The court wrote, "Pure science does not inquire as to whether the result makes this person or that person uncomfortable." Paul Rosignier was not the typical, quote, "Holocaust denier." He was not a fascist. In fact, he fought against the National Socialists. He suffered horrific conditions as a slave laborer in the Buchenwald and Dora camps and barely survived. After the war, he received the highest decoration that the French government bestowed for service in the wartime resistance movement. Our students need to know about Paul Rosignier. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Zechar.
Mr. Zechar is joining us on Zoom. Mr. Zechar, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hard to go after a Holocaust denier, but I will do my best. I was telling today because we had the Home Energy Rebate Program launched last year in Ann Arbor, and I thought it was a really good step forward for our community to help us achieve our climate neutrality goals. But I recently found out about a built-in inequity that a friend actually told me about, and it's really unfortunate, and I hope that you can fix it. A friend today actually reached out to me and said that they had reached out to the city about buying an e-bike, and they were denied, that they were rejected through the program, and the reason that they were rejected was because they live in multifamily housing. As written, the home energy rebates for the whole program, including the e-bike program, are only available to folks who live in up to units of full housing, so people who live in co-ops, people who live in apartments, they're excluded from the rebates. They can't get rebates for insulation, which they probably wouldn't need. They can't get rebates for a lot of the things, but they also can't get e-bike rebates, which seems kind of ridiculous. My friend actually lives in Arrowood Cooperative Housing. You probably know about that nice community that we have. It provides a community for a lot of very long-term residents, people that don't come and go, they're area key Ann Arborites, and many of them are at or below the median income of the area, and yet they aren't eligible at all for any of these rebates, including the e-bike rebates, as the program is written. It seems tremendously inequitable to exclude these residents from participating, especially because they're all taxpayers, they're all long-term residents, and they are exactly the kind of people that this program should and was written to target. Many of them would qualify for the full rebate if they lived in single-family homes, but they don't. They live in cooperative housing, they live in rental communities, and so I really urge council to look at this. It's, you know, anytime you start a new program like this from scratch, that's one of the first in the nation, it's not going to be perfect the first time you do it, so I'd love it if you worked together with staff to fix this inequitable exclusionary part of the program so that all of Ann Arbor could participate in this wonderful new program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Barton.
Our next speaker is Alan Haber.
Thank you. It does disturb me when someone speaks to you and a number of you turn your head that you will not listen. There's nothing I've heard in hearing Henry Hershkowitz over some years, no statement of facts that is not documented. He's not a liar. He's not a denier. He is a historian who's looking at difficult questions in a more open-minded way than those who turn your head are, and I'm sorry to have seen that. But also, you seem to turn your head on the vote of the people of Ann Arbor. When I was here last meeting on the 15th of December, when new funds had appeared, I said, "As a matter of honesty and integrity, when you have commitments and funds appear to be able to put them in the budget, you should do that, not to put them off, and you have made commitments that are not represented in your budget." That's a blindness, an insult, in fact, in the face of the campaign, the vote of the people, as the center of the city should be developed as a Central Park and civic center, as a commons, meaning people have some process, some part in the process. Well, you did not listen, but really, the question isn't about putting money in the budget. The question is about actually recognizing the vote of the people. That's your responsibility, and the oath you took, and you violate it. The people said, "Get the cars off, turn this area into a park, open it to the people," and you refused to do that. Who on the city council will put a resolution forward directing the downtown development authority, "Please terminate surface parking in the Library Lane lot," as directed by the city charter, Chapter 1, Section 4? That's right there in your oath and responsibility, that you did not look at these responsibilities. Having some integrity to yourself is very disturbing. It's a quality of politics that says somehow you or some consensus knows better than what the people decided, and so what I come to call totalitarian democracy, you know, let them talk, let them agitate, let them organize, let them vote, let them do their democracy, but in the end of it, we'll keep doing exactly what we've been doing because we know best. And you apparently all know best, as the city charter is not relevant. Indeed, now the library, I hear from the notice from Milton, the library is interested. Am I all done again?
Yes, thank you.
I wish you would listen.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Lo.
Mr. Lo is joining us on Zoom. Mr. Lo, you can go ahead.
Good evening. This is Alex Lo, someone who does not feel the need to deny genocides and who is capable of maintaining a respectful distance from his microphone, calling in Trumpet Field Village. I'm speaking tonight about some ways in which Ann Arbor continues to subsidize detached houses over people living in townhomes, condos, and other forms of more environmentally-friendly housing. Mr. Zechar has already given a good overview of the issue here, so I'll try not to repeat what he said. I don't believe this is something that city council did intentionally to subsidize the owners of detached housing over the owners of other forms of housing, but this is the effect that the current restrictions on home energy rebates have. As a result, a multimillionaire living in a 3,000-square-foot detached house has more access to financial assistance from the city's home energy rebates than someone making less than the area median income.
And you apparently all know best, as the city charter is not relevant. Indeed, now the library, I hear from the notice from Milton, the library is interested. Am I all done again?
Yes, thank you.
I wish you would listen.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Lo.
Mr. Lo is joining us on Zoom. Mr. Lo, you can go ahead.
Good evening. This is Alex Lo, someone who does not feel the need to deny genocides and who is capable of maintaining a respectful distance from his microphone calling in Trumpet Field Village. I’m speaking tonight about some ways in which Ann Arbor continues to subsidize detached houses over people living in townhomes, condos, and other forms of more environmentally friendly housing. Mr. Zechar has already given a good overview of the issue here, so I’ll try not to repeat what he said. I don’t believe this is something that city council did intentionally to subsidize the owners of detached housing over the owners of other forms of housing, but this is the effect that the current restrictions on home energy rebates have. As a result, a multimillionaire living in a 3,000-square-foot detached house has more access to financial assistance from the city’s home energy rebates than someone making less than the area median income who owns their home in a cooperative housing development, despite the fact that they would otherwise meet the requirements for income-eligible rebates if they owned a more expensive home. As someone living in multifamily housing who is currently going through the process of applying for these rebates in order to install heat pumps, improved insulation, a bigger electrical panel, and potentially battery storage, I’m relying on these home energy rebates, ones that I would have previously got in my more expensive detached house that was on a lot that was far too large for me. I find it kind of worrying that the city still has these baked-in assumptions about how people live and who does and does not deserve the city’s financial support. And if we really want to actually be a climate-friendly city, that is going to be on the forefront of improvements to energy efficiency, to biking, et cetera, I think it is very important that we look at the damage that detached housing is doing to our landscape and ensure that we don’t continue subsidizing that over other forms of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. I’d just like to announce that Councilmember Gazi Edwin and I will be hosting our next Ward 3 Coffee Hour on Saturday, January 25th, at 10:00 a.m. at York on Packard. We will be joined by special guest Ann Arbor Fire Chief Mike Kennedy. Thanks.
Councilmember Watson.
Along similar lines, I’d like to invite Ward 2 residents and community members to a listening session hosted by myself and Councilmember Malik on Sunday, January 12th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Sweet Waters on Plymouth and Green. Hope to see you there.
Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. Once again, I am not going to let Holocaust denialism go unanswered in our community. So tonight, I’m going to mention that the Anti-Defamation League has long recognized Henry Hershkovitz as a Michigan-based Holocaust denier and leader of the anti-Semitic and anti-Zionist organization called Witness for Peace. His Holocaust denialism and hate speech are deeply harmful and reprehensible, not only to the historical record, but also to the Ann Arbor community. His efforts to spread falsehoods about the Holocaust undermine the truth and foster division and hatred in our community, and he’s been doing this for years. The impact of his rhetoric has caused pain and distress for local Holocaust survivors, for their families, and for the broader Jewish community. Denying such a significant atrocity disrespects the memory of those who suffered and died and erodes the values of understanding and compassion that are vital to any community. We must continue to stand firmly against hate speech, although we have to listen to it here, we can speak out against it and work to ensure that our community remains one that embraces truth and tolerance and respect for all.
Councilmember Ackman.
I wanted to thank the people that brought the bike rebate issue to our attention on this side of the table. I know several of us were looking at each other very confused because certainly that was not my intent, and I will be following up on that, so thank you. Also, on a similar theme, I wanted to let people know about the Conquer the Cold 2025 Challenge. This is a chance for you to challenge yourself to track trips that are in a single occupancy vehicle, so you can track bike trips, walking trips, bus trips, telecommuting, carpooling this winter, and you can get a lot of prizes and have good ward competitions, and I intend for Ward 4 to be victorious. So this is going to be running from January 20th to February 20th. There’s also going to be a social – I see some ants flying up. There’s going to be a social kickoff that you can RSVP to. Just go to getdowntown.org. Thanks.
Councilmember Briggs.
I appreciate what my previous colleagues have mentioned, except for the fact that I would just like to suggest that past president does not show that Ward 4 was victorious. Ward 5 was, but I welcome the competition from all Ward colleagues this year. Again.
Councilmember Cornell.
Thank you to Councilmember Ackman and Briggs for bringing that up, because I was going to. Also, I wanted to note for my two children at home that I did use the hot dog hands, so I went on that one. And I wanted to let folks know that there are, for anybody who wants to use a parking lot for a private event, there is a permit process for that. It’s available through the Downtown Development Authority. Anybody is welcome to use it. You just do need to apply for a permit to do that. I have experienced doing that through Spark for several years. There’s no reason why you can’t use those parking lots, or at least apply for them if you did want to have a larger event in the space. And I wanted to note that that permitting process is different than if you want to use a city park. So that permit is available not through the Downtown Development Authority, but through the City of Ann Arbor website on the Parks Department page, you can find the permit for that. So two different uses, a park and a parking lot, and two different ways to reserve the spaces. Thank you.
Further communication from council? I would like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented to council on December 16, 2024, to the Renters Commission, Chris Body, to the Commission on Disability Issues, Anika Conrad. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Councilmember Adina. Second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion? All in favor? Posed? It is approved. I would like to recommend the following nominations for your consideration to the Transportation Commission, Rachel Jacobson and April Conway. We have before us the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda? Moved by Councilmember Cornell. Second by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I’d like to pull CA 9.
Further discussion of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Dish.
I’d like to pull CA 3, just because we’ve received a question or two about it, and it’s simple, so I’ll clarify it.
CA 3. Councilmember Watson.
I’d like to comment briefly on CA 1. As one of the liaisons to the Park Advisory Commission, I just wanted to highlight some of the complexity inherent in this project and many of the projects the city does. This is an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for Gallup Park Muscle Relocation, and the new vehicle bridge constructed in Gallup Park is located within a section of river considered an MDNR natural river within Ann Arbor. So in-water construction impacts, pose of risk to the freshwater mussels, including those under state and federal protection. Therefore, these environmental regulatory agencies required the relocation of mussels prior to the construction of the new Gallup Park Vehicle Bridge as part of their permit requirements. So this contract amendment allows the city to complete follow-up monitoring required by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. So I’m grateful to Parks Manager Josh Landefeld and Project Manager Hillary Hansel for bringing the Gallup Park Bridge project to fruition, and I’m proud of the investments we’ve made in Ann Arbor’s most visited park.
Further, this is going to be Councilmember Gazi Edwin.
Thank you. I just wanted to draw attention to Consent Agenda Item 2, a resolution to approve a contract with the Shelter Association of Wasna County for Winter Emergency Shelter and Warming Centers. I just want to point out the importance of renewing this contract. As we all know, winter is a difficult time, and right now, some don’t know that we have the highest rate of homelessness and housing insecurity in our city and county in our history, with an alarming increase among homelessness among older adults. So I also want to thank the Delana Shelter for some of the services that they provide and other continuum-of-care organizations. So thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the Consent Agenda with the exception of CA 9 and CA 3? Please say aye. Posed? The Consent Agenda is approved, with the exception of CA 3 and CA 9, with 11 council members present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 10. CA 9, Resolution to Approve a Professional Services Agreement with New Gen Strategies and Solutions LLC to Complete an Electric Grid Assessment Valuation and Municipalization Study, the amount of $1,728,000, moved by Councilmember Briggs. Second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of CA 9. I believe there’s a staff – thank you. I believe there is a staff introduction.
I believe Dr. Stulz and Attorney Jackson are available for the staff introduction.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hello. We received the question regarding CA 9. Can staff comment on how we are going to budget for and time the appropriate legal evaluation that must inform what we put in front of voters? Also, why this work is costing almost double what we estimated? In response, staff would like to say that the staff committee that will be supporting new gen strategies and solutions on delivering the proposed scope of services includes representatives from the city attorney’s office, as well as outside legal counsel, which will help ensure that the city’s legal team is kept apprised of developments and findings related to the study, so the city can appropriately prepare and strategize regarding next steps. Should a decision be made to proceed with a formal municipalization effort, it is likely that additional resources, funding, and staff will be needed to evaluate which evaluation method to put before the voters and to craft optimal ballot language so that voters fully understand the implications and costs of municipalization. However, because we will not know whether city council will wish to pursue formal municipalization until after the Phase 2 study, those additional resources that may be needed to take municipalization to a vote of the people have not been budgeted for at this time. In terms of the question regarding pricing, the $1 million staff estimate was based on preliminary conversations with communities and consultants familiar with studies of this nature, and however, the city only received one bid in response to the RFP for the Phase 2 Municipalization Study, and the final pricing of that bid is what is before council this evening.
Thank you. So as folks in the public know, we have long been contemplating our electric future, and I’m excited about the prospect of this study and this process ultimately moving forward. The question of the ownership of our electric utility is crucial to Ann Arbor’s future, and it warrants public conversation and public decision-making ultimately. Going forward, this study, in my view, the process and this study must have council support and it must have public support, because it’s, well, it’s an important issue and it’s a big, big spend. That commonality, I believe, will best be based upon a common understanding of the report’s role, and I believe that there has been some deviation here, some difference of perspectives. From our perspective, from my perspective, the Phase 2 study’s purpose is not to establish the cost definitively, but rather to help form our initial offer, and crucially, to later serve as a tool in litigation. This double usage is fundamental. It’s fundamental because Michigan law is unclear as to the methodology by which one would ultimately calculate the value of DTE assets, and the report is designed to engage these different methodologies and provide values associated with each method. It’s not designed presently to choose among them. Let’s say, for example, that there are three valuation methods, A, B, or C. The report will include values arrived at utilizing A, B, and C methods. Current direction is that as the report is being developed, we will, well, as we heard now, there’s going to be legal engagement with the process as necessary and proper, and staff is looking for council directions to whether or not there should perhaps be a parallel path for developing language associated. That’s something which I’m excited to begin my own work on. Ultimately, moving forward, what we’re going to do, I think, is use the facts articulated in the report to arrive at some offer number. Why are we proceeding in this fashion? Why don’t we have the consultant or their lawyers decide on a method and then go forward with the value in accordance with that method, a practice that would avoid a report that presents a number of different values, some of which we will not advance? Why don’t we just ask the consultant to establish the proper method and then present that value both to the public and the court? In addition to there being a crucial practice of separating expert reports from litigation counsel, we don’t have the Phase 2 report select a method because the method selected by the report could be wrong. That is, it could be different from the methodology required by the court ultimately, in the event that the voters approve are moving forward. For example, if the Phase 2 report only identified the value arrived at using Method B, and the court agreed that Method B was appropriate, then it would be fairly simple. We’d have our value, DTE would have their value, and the court would decide. However, if the Phase 2 report only identified the value arrived at using Method B, and the court concluded that Method C were appropriate, then we would be disarmed and defenseless. The court would review DTE’s Method C value, and we would have no competing Method C value to counterbalance, and this is an unacceptable position in litigation. In other words, the report is not simply useful for us to help establish a number for the public to consider, it is also a crucial litigation document that supports our ability to respond to DTE’s valuation claims, no matter what methodology the court ultimately adopts. Per prior, it’s my view that the study itself and the process has to have full public buy-in. I’m excited about the prospect of that going forward. I’m looking forward to additional conversations with respect to it, but I also know that that takes time, and that’s not where we are today. And so although there may be additional, and I would be delighted if there were or not, conversation here at the table ultimately will be asking for, I’ll be asking someone at the table to move to table the matter. For folks in the audience, we don’t table things very often. When we do table a resolution, the motion is not further considered at the present meeting, and then at a later time, the resolution can come back to council upon a vote of six members. There is no time certain when that occurs. It’s my hope that that would be relatively soon, as soon as a common understanding could be accomplished, but that that is, that’s something that we’d be waiting on to occur. Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody who came tonight to speak on the subject or to show support. I know that there’s been a lot of community organizing around this, and I appreciate that. I think it’s definitely important as we move forward that we are moving forward in alignment in terms of how those advocates in the community and how council and city staff are seeing this. It’s important to take that time to make sure that folks are on the same page. I would say that there are also, while the room is filled with a number of people who are very comfortable with the next step of municipalizing, I will say, as a council member, I hear also from folks who definitely don’t want us to take that step. And so the information that comes out of this Phase 2 study is really important in terms of making sure that we have that baseline understanding of what taking this next step would look like, and to make sure that we have all the information that voters would need and that council would need if we ever did, to actually take this to a vote. So it’s really important that we move forward carefully and pragmatically and understand what’s needed out of a Phase 2 study. So I will move to table unless I see somebody else’s hand up that would like to make a comment. Okay, I’ll move to table.
Second, supported by Councilmember Cornell. I believe that vote table is no, does not have debate, but it does require eight votes. So, of course.
Our city attorney is just checking on her Roberts rules. From the Roberts rule stickler in the group.
I believe the proper motion would be to postpone
I believe the proper motion would be to postpone indefinitely.
Postponing indefinitely will not require, well, my understanding is that kills that...
Postponing indefinitely, you're correct. Tabling does, somebody can move to bring it back to the table, but tabling is temporarily at that meeting. That's the distinction.
So postponing indefinitely would not enable us to bring it back? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it would have to be brought back as a new motion.
All right, well, we don't want it as a new motion.
Point of order here?
Yes.
Could we postpone definitely to, after a specific event has occurred?
Yes.
Specific...
You could postpone to after a specific event has occurred, and that occurred, that event could be a staff recommendation on a way to proceed forward or however you choose to verbalize it.
Could we postpone it until, if you'll forgive me, the mayor requests it to come back or the administration committee requests it to come back?
The administration committee, yes. That would work, yes.
Has everyone seen that that's fine? The administration committee may require a special meeting if, you know, in order to do it in a timely fashion, but administration committee meetings will have no trouble with that, I assume? Great. So, what I heard you say, Councilmember Briggs, was instead a motion to postpone?
That's exactly what I said the first time around, yes. I don't know why, there was so much confusion.
A motion to postpone until we receive the recommendation of the administration committee to bring it back to the table. That's seconded by Councilmember Cornell. And that's a motion to postpone, so that's a conversation piece. Is there anything anyone would like to say? Councilmember Ayer.
I simply want to, first of all, thank you to our city attorney for looking that up on the fly, and thank you to my colleagues for indulging me on that. The reason I'm a stickler for this is because tabling does not allow for discussion. It's something that can be abused. And so I don't think it was in this case at all. Let me make that clear. But I think it's really important that we follow the correct procedure for that reason.
Is it appropriate to discuss the table? Okay, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to throw in my two cents about what I'm hoping to see back, that I think I need time to better understand. You know, this is a significant chunk of money. It's a significant amount of time on top of time that we've already spent, you know, somewhat pursuing the, learning more information about this path. So I, you know, I would just like to better understand what exactly city council gets from this, what decision points there are still going to be before we would put something in front of the public and to make sure that we have planned all of the components of what would be necessary to bring it to the public. I feel like I'm still not clear on that. And it might just, I might just need to read more deeply or I might need more information, but that is what I'm hoping for once it comes back.
Thank you. I just want to clarify why we are seeing this again. In the case of the Beekman on Broadway project, it was a conditional zoning which was tied to the site plan, which does not have to happen. But it means, then, that any change to the site plan has to be approved by council. And so the site plan for Phase 2 was changed in 2023 to shift from a townhome project to rental housing, which is needed and has been very successful at this highly walkable location. City council approved that change to the site plan on July 17, 2023. And at that time, the developer voluntarily offered to go beyond the obligations that were created in the original project for affordable housing to offer an additional six affordable units, which raises the total for that project from the 15 that had been tied to the brownfield financing to 21 affordable units. So we're getting six new affordable units. And the amended agreement for our approval adds nothing new to what we have already approved. By approving the site plan, it merely reflects what we approved in the site plan. So there were some questions that were received, and I wanted to clarify. One of the questions was, what's new here? And the answer is actually, well, nothing really exactly. It's procedural. But nonetheless, gratitude for the six units.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council in the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers both in-house and online will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Section 5.22, 5.26, 5.28, 5.29, 5.30, and 5.37 of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have any callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, an ordinance to amend Section 10, 143 of Chapter 126 Traffic of Title 10 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Alex Lowe, do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Alex Lowe. I already spoke about this at the general time at the last meeting, but it doesn't seem that any changes have been made regarding the fact that this will potentially cause problems for a large number of people who don't have non-street parking options. And while I understand the reason for putting this in, I think the language regarding what areas may be exempted should be changed. We can both make this stricter in some cases. For example, there are blocks that contain no driveways where there is no need for street parking, so we could eliminate that. And prevent this issue for people who are required to park in the street that do have driveways on their block from other residences by changing it to say that the vehicle may be parked outside a home that does not have a driveway. And we can put in some additional requirements about who has it or who may park in front of those homes and stuff. But in general, the fact that we're using driveways existing on the entire block, I believe, is sort of not fine-grained enough and will likely cause the city administrator's office a lot of work in generating that list of exceptions, whilst ending up with a bunch of places where it would not be necessary to provide an exception, still allowing cars parking on the street and potentially causing hazards to stop us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, an ordinance to add Section 8, 532 to Chapter 105 Housing Code of Title 8 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing? All you do is walk on up and say your say.
Hello, my name is Kevin Zhang. I'm a resident of Ward 4. And actually, I'm a new resident. I'm happy to have moved here from Massachusetts just a couple of months ago to start graduate school at the University of Michigan. And it's been really great to be here in the city. And thanks for your consideration of this ordinance. When I was moving here, I was able to have the freedom to choose housing in a way that wasn't coercive, that wasn't, I didn't feel compelled to go with a certain house because I had put down a huge, kind of insurmountable, application fee. And so luckily, I was able to secure housing. But I know that many other students, many other new residents coming in to the city don't have that same opportunity. And so I urge the council to consider this ordinance, consider this addition, because it's really great to have the freedom to be able to pick the right housing and evaluate housing options on their merits, not on the basis of fees that are unfair, that are in the many thousands of dollars, which, as a grad student, I can tell you that I don't have that kind of money. So let's keep the city inclusive. And yes, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi. In a 2023 CSG student housing survey, students were asked if they were charged pre-tenancy fees without signing a lease and the extent that they were charged. I actually went through the spreadsheet today, and there I saw a waitlist fee of $100, a waitlist fee of $500, a waitlist fee of $300, a depositor waitlist fee, again, without signing a lease yet, of $499, a waitlist fee of $150. One student wrote, "We had to sign an application fee of $75 per person, a pet deposit of $300." Quote, "We also had to pay about $300 to secure our spot. The contract and lease would then only be available to sign 30 days before move-in. And if we wanted to sign a lease sooner, we would have to cancel our application and lose the $300 spot-reserving fee. That's already over $700 in fees." Another application fee of $350. Another group of students had to pay $75 per person as a waitlist fee. $400, $300, $1,000 lease takeover fee, but quote, "The landlord didn't give me my specific lease until I paid this." One student wrote, "Landlords are using loopholes. You need to put down reservations months in advance for a place." Another wrote, "This is just how it is in Ann Arbor, and this is what people do. Even with that early leasing ordinance, waitlists and waitlist fees were so prevalent that you had to. It changed on a fundamental level very little." Another lease transfer fee, $300. Let us not be remiss. The ultimate driving force which allows this practice to continue is the complete lack of affordable housing units that address the needs of this community. However, asking for transparency is the first step in allowing the city to truly uncover the housing crisis that has been ongoing in Ann Arbor. It provides residents of Ann Arbor with the ability to make informed decisions about where they live and how they budget. This ordinance succeeds in calling out the practices of pre-tenancy fees for what they are, unnecessary and predatory. As the guiding purposes of Ann Arbor Housing Code 105 stipulates, the city must protect not just the health and safety of its residents, but also their welfare. Passing this amendment would provide protections from the clear danger of an unregulated housing market that seeks to take advantage of those simply seeking a place to live. Were I to amend the proposal, I would specifically include lease transfer fees within Section 2C of 8532. With consideration of the frequency this was brought up as an undue pre-tenancy fee, the extent to which these fees fall on the extreme end of fees seen within the survey, and the potential for misuse through deliberate misinterpretation of the operational definition of pre-tenancy fees. As the city council considers and hopefully approves this ordinance, I look forward to its future work addressing the anxiety-inducing competitive nightmare that is renting in Ann Arbor.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for giving me a slot to speak. I came here because I think that this ordinance is really, really important for housing equity in Ann Arbor. From personal experience, when I was moving here, I'm a grad student right now, it was really hard to find housing just because I was moving from out of state and I was doing a lot of virtual calls. I did have a chance to come and look in an apartment before signing, but before I did that, I actually put down like an application fee. We put down an application fee of like $300. We realized that the place wasn't like super great. We weren't able to get that money back. But this is just like an example of some of the like financial burdens that we're taking on as we like try to look for a place to live. And I think that like limiting the amount of fees that tenants will have to pay before they're leasing will really help improve equity and like help a lot of people out. Yeah, I know some people have paid like in like the thousands before even like moving into their apartment, which is ridiculous. And like, there's definitely no way I would have been able to afford that at all. I was really lucky. I had like a couple hundred dollars to spend there. And yeah, so please consider this. I think this is a really great ordinance. Yes, thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is James Nichols with the Washington Area Apartment Association. I'm here to address the ongoing housing crisis in Ann Arbor and the significant consequences surrounding this proposed ordinance that would ban waitlist fees, holding fees, and other pre-tenancy options. In '24, Councilmember Ayer acknowledges the severity of this crisis by stating that Ann Arbor is tens of thousands of beds short of a sustainable rental market. It is crucial to emphasize how this ordinance will exacerbate the housing shortage by further handcuffing landlords and property professionals, ultimately deterring developers from investing in the construction of new housing units. The existing ELO already creates substantial challenges for landlords and tenants by shortening the leasing market to just six weeks before students leave for the summer break. This compressed timeline forces 30,000 students to find housing in a chaotic market while simultaneously managing the demands of studying and preparing for final exams. This system is neither tenor-friendly nor sustainable. For instance, if a renter wanted to begin their housing search in November, current regulations require landlords to turn businesses away or turn away business due to restrictions imposed by the ELO. A waitlist option would provide these renters with greater control and peace of mind, allowing them to secure housing before winter break. Instead of existing, instead, the existing system forces them to compete with tens of thousands of others during a stressful six-week period. Eliminating waitlist removes a valuable tool that empowers renters to plan and make informed decisions. To illustrate the broader implications, consider what would happen if city council shortened the home-buying market by six months. This artificial restriction would create a hyper-competitive environment, driving up home prices and pricing people out of the market. The same principle applies to the rental market. By limiting the tools available to landlords and renters, the ordinance increases competition, drives up rents, and worsens the housing shortage. drives up rents, and worsens the housing shortage. The Renters Commission was established to enhance the renters' power in this market, yet the ordinance contradicts its intended purpose. By taking away options like waitlists, the ordinance strips renters of the ability to secure housing earlier in their academic year. Waitlists are not predatory. They provide renters with the peace of mind for an upfront cost that is often refunded within 48 hours if the renter does not secure a unit. These fees function similar to security deposits by allowing renters to reserve their place without additional stress and does not add to the overall cost of the 12-month lease. The Washtenaw Area Apartment Association believes that this ordinance reflects a misunderstanding of the rental market and believes, or in the benefits of early housing options provided to students. The removal of these options will only increase the stress and panic among renters while simultaneously worsening the supply-demand imbalance that drives up housing costs. If city council genuinely seeks to protect renters, it must consider the realities of the market and work towards solutions that increase housing supply rather than imposing further restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Taylor, council, neighbors, fellow property owners and managers. My name is Jordan Else. I'm here today as a property owner, manager, and neighbor, committed to working more toward fairness and equity in Ann Arbor. I'm speaking to express my strong support for this ordinance. This ordinance is a crucial step in creating a more just and transparent rental market in Ann Arbor, and I'm grateful that council has chosen to take this on. Last year, I worked with a group of renters who lost $14,000 in a non-refundable fee. This isn't an isolated case, while it is on the high end, of course. I've heard from dozens of renters and parents with similar stories. Pre-tenancy fees such as waitlist fees, holding fees, and options fees are not only unethical, but also unfair. They provide little security to renters while putting the bulk of power on the side of property managers. These fees further increase the difficulty in renting for those with criminal histories, past evictions, and marginalized identities, making it harder for folks to find and secure housing of their choice. Waitlists don't provide any certainty for either party. Renters don't know where they stand on a waitlist. Due to financial burden, signing up for multiple lists is impossible for many. That wouldn't have been possible for me as a student. Banning pre-tenancy fees gives renters more power and choice, allowing them to shop around and make informed decisions, something we would all want for ourselves if we were having to rent. Moreover, happy renters are long-term renters. It benefits everyone in our community. Eliminating these fees, we create a more stable and positive rental experience. I appreciate the work the city is doing to address the housing shortage. Like most of us in this room, I wish it could happen faster with more affordable options. In the current market, landlords have little reason to engage in these practices, as certainty of leasing is nearly guaranteed. As property managers and owners, we can run a successful business without relying on waitlist fees, pre-tenancy fees at all. I can tell you from experience that doing it actually makes things easier, cleaner, and far less time-consuming. I don't understand why other landlords don't choose it. The current system disadvantages low-income renters, students, and members of protected classes. By restricting these harmful practices, we can level the playing field and ensure more equitable access to housing for everyone. Our renters and neighbors deserve a more fair, transparent, and simple leasing process. I urge the city council to continue to work in promoting fairness and equity within our housing system. I encourage fellow property professionals to join the cause too. This doesn't have to be separate. We can work together to create a rental market where renters are treated with dignity and where landlords can operate without relying on these unethical practices. Our community can indeed thrive together.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Mayor Taylor, city staff, and neighbors here today. Handcuffing landlords, what a concept, right? My name is Nathan Kim, and I'm a tenant at the Ann Arbor Woods complex close to the east side of town. I'm here with my fellow members and organizers of the Ann Arbor Tenant Union to voice my unequivocal support for this ordinance, which will bring an end to a much criticized and exploitative practice used liberally by Ann Arbor landlords. I'd also like in my comments to briefly draw attention to two points related to its impacts and future work that lies ahead of us. First, this ordinance is directed at pre-tenancy waitlist fees, and does not address many of the fees that landlords use to manipulate tenants. These range from pet fees to trash fees, cleaning fees, move-out fees, move-in fees, appliance fees, administrative fees, maintenance fees, sewage fees, landscaping fees, parking fees, and as you can imagine, it goes on. Some of these sound reasonable, but most of these fees are assessed without any additional services provided by given landlord, and are additionally not disclosed of the time of signing a lease, despite adding potentially hundreds of dollars a month for tenants in rent. The exceptionally high rents that are publicized by landlords are, due to liberal use of these fees, in fact, even higher in practice. So we at the Ann Arbor Tenant Union are eager to see legislation finishing the job here and ensuring tenants can live a dignified, affordable, and sensible life in Ann Arbor. Secondly, I wanted to speak briefly to the ramifications of this ordinance as it relates to landlord responses. As those in this room are likely well aware, Michigan has no form of rent control, and in fact, rent control legislation is illegal and cannot be enacted at a municipal level. The landlord response to this ordinance could thus be to raise rents, or even the fees assessed during tenancy to make up for these lost, the parasitic income from the application process. This ordinance has immediate value in banning the market manipulation of pre-tenancy fees while tenants are searching for apartments, but ultimately, stronger action is needed to close all the loopholes that landlords might take. We need legislation cracking down on fees assessed during tenancy, and support from council for other forms of action like tenant unions to negotiate fair rents, no fees, and dignified living. We're glad to see the ordinance being discussed in this public hearing and look forward to working with you all to building a more affordable and just Ann Arbor for all tenants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Sophia. I am a first-time renter in Ann Arbor, as well as a first-time renter in general. I want to express my support for this ordinance. I recently moved here, and I must say, I was really disappointed with how expensive it was to just begin applying or to even be considered for an apartment. Upon paying many of these fees, applicants receive little to no value. These fees in particular take advantage of potential Ann Arbor renters, given that there are many young renters, first-time renters, and students who are in a time crunch to acquire housing before their studies begin. These fees are exploitative and excessive. Affordable housing is an ongoing issue here and elsewhere. This ordinance is a step in the right direction, and I hope it will be passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Arbor City Council, Mayor Taylor. I would also like to stand up and speak in favor of this resolution. The housing affordability crisis is one that we all know too well, and it is oftentimes very difficult to figure out the right tact in order to address it. There are various different areas where there are problems that need to be addressed. However, we are lucky in some ways when we find an area that is so cut and dry as this one. Parasitic, abusive practices by a subset of landlords that are primarily relying on inexperience in the rental market, preying on people who are in a disadvantaged situation, is something that government absolutely has a responsibility to address. These types of junk fees should not exist, are immoral to be charging, and should be legislated away. We've heard from other landlords at this meeting expressing a desire for these fees to be removed so that they can be operating on a level playing field. This, in my opinion, is a no-brainer, and I hope you will move forward with the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Lan. I'm a resident from Ward Three. I want to voice my support for this ordinance. As a renter in Ann Arbor, I noticed that it gets harder and harder to find affordable housing each year. I also noticed that the pre-tenancy fees get more expensive each year, making it harder. In the last leasing round, it cost me $300 just to get my name on a list with no guarantee of getting a lease. It would take months to find out if I was going to be with or without housing. I'm not a fan of gambling. $300 just to be, just to put my name on a waitlist with no guarantee on a lease is absurd. On top of that, there would be no guarantee if I'd be getting that money back if I was not able to get a spot. I found it hard to trust that a landlord of all people would just give my money back just on blind faith. In total, along with the non-refundable application fee cost of $100, and the non-refundable administrative fee of $200, it cost me $500 just to move into my apartment. That's almost half a grand. What's sad is I'm not the only victim to these kinds of predatory pre-tenancy fees, and the others had to pay more. I ask you all to vote for the passing of this ordinance in support of the people you represent, and as one, as people have mentioned before, that the definition of the pre-tenancy fees is made more clear and that all loopholes are closed. With the remaining amount of time that I have left, I want to thank the sponsors of the ordinance, and specifically, council members Travis and Cynthia, and Rosanita of the Renters Commissions for meeting with the Ann Arbor Tenant Union about this issue. It took a while for us to get here, but I'm thankful it eventually happened. Landlords need to be held accountable for the junk fees that they choose to charge just for the sake of greed, and this ordinance would help us move towards a more equitable reality of living. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm also here to express my support for this ordinance, and specifically, I would like to talk about the waitlist fees that are often applied when going to, applying for a lease. If you may not be aware, a lot of times landlords will have you apply to a waitlist and pay a fee. Personally, me and my roommates last year paid $2,000, and these are paid before March, which is a deadline, which means that landlords are not allowed to show the apartments, which oftentimes means that tenants are essentially signing leases without ever seeing the apartments. Because if we get on this waitlist and do not sign the lease, we do not get our $2,000 back. And I personally, last year in my housing, housing situation was kind of on the negative end of this housing, sorry, it was less than ideal situation, where essentially ended up in a bedroom with no windows, due to the pictures being somewhat deceptive and the landlord also being deceptive. So basically, all I'm saying is I ask my support for this, for this ordinance, as tenants are being financially coerced into, you know, signing these leases before ever seeing their apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we have a couple callers. Alex Lowe, do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Alex Logan. I'm grateful to counsel, and especially my Ward Three representative, Fabrice Deena, for bringing this up, and I expect to pass unanimously. These are predatory fees that are frankly just the landlords trying to further externalize the cost of doing business in order to bolster their profits. The gentleman from W came crying about how this takes away waitlists, but it does no such thing. All that it, all that it does is prevent people, prevents the landlords from being able to charge for being based on waitlists. As you've heard, this is in the hundreds, sometimes the thousands of dollars for having your contact information placed in a spreadsheet. This seems like not only is it quite predatory, but if the government were to do something, something like the Supreme Court would, despite their weird stances these days, call even that insane. Fundamentally though, this is a Band-Aid being put over a massive gaping wound. This, this can only exist because we're in a situation where landlords have so much power over tenants, and they are basically able to guarantee that every one of their units will go. What we, one of the many things we need to address this is far more housing. And one of the ways to do this is to fix our broken exclusionary zoning laws. So whilst this is a good step in the right direction, it is but a baby step, where we need to be, to be taking a supersonic plane to get where we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Jiskovic, do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Adam Jiskovic calling from the Fourth Ward. I wasn't planning to speak on this ordinance tonight because I assumed it's going to pass unanimously, but I felt it was necessary because someone spoke in opposition to it. I think that's pretty shameful, especially the way he framed his opposition as being favorable to tenants. The Washtenaw Area Apartment Association ought to be ashamed of themselves for making that argument. We can all see through it, and it's as ridiculous as that guy's outfit. Landlords in Ann Arbor are certainly not hurting for money, and these fees are clearly unnecessary, predatory, and greedy. This ordinance is entirely appropriate, and it does not bother me at all that it's going to slightly cut into the profits of landlords. I know it feels like whack-a-mole dealing with all of these abuses from landlords, but we have to keep doing it until we can build enough housing that landlords are competing for tenants and not the other way around. Please enact this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other callers online for this hearing.
It's okay. Bye.
You bet. Come on up.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Michaela LeClaire. I live here in Ann Arbor, and I'm speaking today as a social worker and as somebody who has experienced homelessness personally. From 2020 to 2022, I worked as a case manager for a rapid rehousing program that supported young adults, many with young children, to find and maintain permanent housing. This rapid rehousing program required folks to be literally homeless, cat one or cat four, and they had to have low or no income to be eligible for this housing program. Homelessness is really cyclical and awful, and impacts people's lives in countless and really devastating ways. And I watched as young women with children struggled to get into housing and blamed themselves for failing their families and not being able to find a place. I think young adults are uniquely disadvantaged when it comes to housing because they often don't have a credit score at all, either low or no credit, and then they also don't have extensive rental history. Young adults also have lower incomes. Application fees can be from 50 to 100 to 150 per application, and due to folks' credit scores and incomes, people would have their applications denied. But it's a numbers game, so you have to keep applying to try to get into a place. And so that 50, $100 for three applications, that stacks up, especially when the requirement is that you have no or low income. So a lot of these junk fees can often like keep people in this cycle of homelessness. Holding fees, administration fees, waitlist fees, move-in fees, and other junk fees are pretty significant barriers for people who are desperately working for a better life. I did hear somebody on the council say that homelessness in this area is at an all-time high, and so this is just one thing that we can do to make a tangible change that folks have access and can at least have a fighting chance to get into housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house or online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we do have another caller online. Caller with the phone number running in 418. Press star six to unmute your phone. Go ahead. Caller with the phone number 418, do you have a comment?
That they're refunded within 60 days if a lease isn't offered. These changes address a persistent issue that renters are facing, which is being financially burdened by exorbitant and often non-refundable fees. It's a practice that has turned housing searches into financial traps, especially for those who are already struggling. We've heard a lot about that tonight. And to the landlords who oppose eliminating these fees, I just want to make this clear. As a renter, as a tenant, we don't think that the extra fees should be a part of your business model. If you choose to be a landlord here in Ann Arbor, you should align with the values of the city. align with the values of the city. And you can still turn a profit without charging these exorbitant waitlists and other application fees, these pre-tenancy fees. You don't need to stockpile these non-refundable application fees and other pre-tenancy fees to prove that your property is in demand. People talk, tenants talk, renters gravitate towards places that make us feel welcome and not exploited. As a city, we talk, and as a state, we talk about how we value young talent, and we want to see younger people in Ann Arbor and see it as a place to thrive, not a place where they're financially taken advantage of by predatory practices. We already have some amazing landlords who embody these values, landlords who treat tenants with respect, transparency, and fairness. Those are the landlords and developers that we should be celebrating, the ones who build within the constructs of our city's values, not those who seek to undermine the sense of community resiliency that we're trying to foster here. I want to thank council members Redina and Harrison for crafting this ordinance and taking the time to solicit feedback from tenants as well as landlords. And we think that this is a really critical first step in the process of making sure that affordable housing is affordable and unaffordable housing becomes affordable. I'd also like to thank council members Watson, Cornell, and I feel like I'm missing a name, and so I'm very sorry if I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number four, resolution to approve new fees for the public sale of the city flag. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have any callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the minutes of the work session of February 12, planning section of December 9, and the regular meeting minutes of December 16, 2024. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes, moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion of the minutes. All in favor? Opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend sections 5.22, 5.26, 5.28, 5.29, 5.30, and 5.37 of Chapter 55, the United Development Code of Title V, the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish.
I've already explained this or spoken to it, but I will, so I will be brief. There are some changes to our fence ordinance, so if you're going to put up a fence or if you want to make your fence more opaque, you're actually allowed to do that by this ordinance, and you should just have a look at it. What I want to talk about is the reimbursement parts of the ordinance, which is what I spoke to before, and essentially, there is a misalignment right now between what we, what the city will reimburse in terms of your fees and the amount of affordable housing that you need to provide in order to earn that reimbursement. Currently, developments with any number or percentage, including a single affordable housing unit, are offered a reimbursement of 50% of fees paid. This ordinance revision aligns the percentage of the fee rebate with the percentage of the housing. So how much, what is the percentage of the square feet of your development that you are devoting to affordable housing? That is the amount of your fees, cut in half, that you could have paid. I know the math is maybe a little more than we can all handle in this post-holiday freezing cold moment, so I'll just give you a quick example. If you had a site plan for 15 new buildings, including a hotel, apartments, restaurants, parking structures, totaling a little over 2 million square feet of floor area, and you were doing 6% of that total floor area as affordable housing, the project would normally require around $118,000 in fees, which is not quite what you have to pay to get on a waitlist for a rental, but just kidding. The current policy would reimburse you half that amount, almost $60,000, which is really for just 6% of your total floor area. And so the proposed policy would allow you to be reimbursed 3% of total fees paid, which is one-half of 6%, which brings that reimbursement down from almost $120,000 to $3,554. This is just smart policymaking, and I don't think we're going to have any disagreement about it, but go to it.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend section 10.143 of Chapter 126, traffic of Title 10 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. Discussion, please, of B2. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I just wanted to articulate, as I did last time, my support for making these changes. I think we need to figure out ways that we can clear our streets more effectively following a snowstorm, and this is something that Public Services has been contemplating for some time, and so I think it's a smart move for us to consider. There's certainly a period of time where education will be a part of this. As we know, we'll need to get out word across our community that when we send out an alert, folks will need to find ways to move their cars. I did want to address one of the comments that got raised during the public hearing around adding more details in about the types of street types. And I, from my perspective, I think that there's enough context within the ordinance already. There's section, one of the sections reads, "Other streets exempt from the on-street snow parking ban. The city administrator shall maintain and publish a list of and map of the streets for which the ban does not apply because of inadequate off-street parking, safety concerns, or other site constraints." So I think a fair amount of discretion is within that other site constraints that allows us to, you know, figure out, there are certainly some streets and neighborhoods that we know that this won't apply to very well, but many of our neighborhoods will work, and our administrator will be, and Public Services team will be able to come up with a process for identifying that. So I don't think we need to overwork that at the council table.
Further discussion? Councilmember Malik.
Thank you. I feel confident the required 12-hour notification before an on-street snow parking ban and the several important exemptions, as just described by Councilmember Briggs, make this policy workable for most. Once you combine it with the approach of outreach and education on the ordinance change and minimal enforcement for the first few years to ensure good understanding, means this new policy will achieve several important goals, including increased snowpiling efficiency, increased safety during a significant snow event, all with straightforward but minimal disruption for residents. Therefore, I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B3, an ordinance to amend section, pardon me, an ordinance to add section 8.532 of Chapter 105 Housing Code of Title 8 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Redina, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion, please, of B3. Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by thanking the members of the public who joined us this evening to speak out and share your personal experiences during the public hearing. I also want to again express my gratitude to all of the collaborators who made this legislation possible tonight, especially the Renters Commission, including Chair Rosanita Ratcliffe and former Chair Zachariah Farah. I'll note that the Commission's resolution in support of this ordinance is attached to the agenda on Legistar. I also want to thank the Ann Arbor Tenants Union, city staff, especially attorneys John Reiser and Jennifer Richards, and of course, my colleague and fellow sponsor, Councilmember Harrison, for their work on this. We heard tonight from the Wasna Area Apartment Association, speaking at length, interestingly, about their concern for tenants. Tonight, I will note, tenants spoke for themselves, and we have the power to provide a solution to a real and costly problem impacting them and so many other residents in our community. While tonight's ordinance does not address the previously passed early leasing ordinance, I do want to briefly address it because we continue to hear from landlords about the burdens on tenants of empowering them to make leasing decisions closer to the end of their existing leases. Landlords complain about the ELO creating an artificial leasing period. The reality is, the ELO shifted what was already an artificial and forced leasing period from the early fall, just weeks into existing campus leases, to much later in the year, empowering residents and tenants to make more informed decisions and closer to the end of their existing leases. The difference, tenants, not landlords, were most empowered by this change. I spoke at length about the importance of this ordinance at the last meeting, so rather than being overly repetitive, I want to briefly focus on who will most benefit from this. We heard tonight during our public hearing about the financial burden that many of these fees have on students, particularly those who are not from affluent backgrounds. Some of the most egregious fees are being charged in Ann Arbor, that are being charged in Ann Arbor tends to directly prey on student renters, seeking to take advantage of their more limited rental options should they wish to remain in the near campus area. I hear regularly from students and their parents about the exorbitant costs just to be considered for a lease. We heard from just a few of them tonight. These practices are indefensible and unconscionable, and we have the power to end them. Rental junk fees, in this case pre-tenancy fees, also have a proven disproportionate impact on people of color, who are nearly two times more likely to rent than white residents, and are therefore more likely to pay these fees time and time again. The impact on low-income families is clear and documented, limiting their ability to apply or even be considered at many rental properties, and especially not at multiple rental properties, often forcing these lower-income families into less desirable, lower-quality housing. Finally, I want to express to all of those who shared concerns tonight about their rental, about other rental fees and not just pre-tenancy fees. This is not the end of our ongoing effort to crack down on the most predatory landlords in our community. It is just the next step. Councilmember Harrison and I are already working with all of the same collaborators and the Renters Commission to address other predatory rental junk fees and to provide tenants with real rent transparency here in Ann Arbor. The fight continues after tonight. Finally, I encourage my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be a little bit redundant because I was unable to attend the meeting, the last meeting, so I'll be talking a little bit about why this is important. Last month, it was announced that homelessness in the United States has increased by 18%. This is not just a statistic, it's a stark reminder of the growing housing crisis facing our nation. Here in Ann Arbor, we cannot afford to stand idle while so many struggle to secure stable housing. This ordinance is one step we can take to address the barriers renters face when searching for a home. Excessive pre-tenancy fees, often non-refundable, are predatory and place a disproportionate burden on those already living paycheck to paycheck. These fees force individuals to gamble with money they cannot afford to lose, money that could otherwise go toward essentials like food, or health, or daycare, healthcare or daycare. By capping rental application fees at $50 and requiring refunds within 60 days if no lease is offered, we are creating a more fair and transparent housing process. This policy ensures that renters are not taken advantage of during an already stressful search for housing. But let me emphasize, this ordinance is part of a larger vision for affordable housing in Ann Arbor. While we work to increase the supply of affordable units, we must also ensure that the process of securing housing is accessible to all. This ordinance is a practical step towards equity and accountability in our housing market, reinforcing that Ann Arbor values dignity and fairness. As we face a national housing crisis, this is how we lead locally, with bold action, one step at a time. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this ordinance and to continue prioritizing policies that make housing a right and not a privilege. Thank you.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you, and thank you to Councilmember Redina and Harrison for bringing forward this, along with the Renters Commission, and for everybody who came tonight to speak out in support of this. I think this is a really important move forward for our community. Happy to co-sponsor it this evening. We heard a fair amount tonight about the impact on younger renters, but as we know, this impacts renters all across our community. I received, I've received a number of concerned emails on this topic, but one in particular that stuck with me was from a constituent who had sent a message from his mother, who was a 75-year-old woman who was seeking to move to Ann Arbor, and she was going to be required to provide a $750 non-refundable waitlist fee. When she pushed back on that after reading the information about it, the fairly large property management firm sent back a message, essentially trying to, it was a fairly grotesque attempt to manipulate both her and put pressure on council against, regarding the early leasing ordinance, and suggesting that the reason that these fees were necessary was because of the changes and early leasing ordinance. While I suspect that this property management firm has done this repeatedly, I'd like to note that I have not received one concerned email since we have adopted the early leasing ordinance for a potential renter about the timeframe. What I have received numerous concerned emails about is these predatory waitlist fees. This is something that folks should be ashamed that they have been doing in our community, and it's, I'm happy to be supporting the change tonight.
Councilmember Ackman.
I guess I just want to echo in a very direct way how shockingly patronizing it is to watch someone representing landlords come in here, hear all of these renters speak about this predatory practice and how it impacts them, and then say, no, it's actually good for you. So clearly, legislation is needed because they're not going to do it on their own. As a young person in East Lansing, I was subject to some similar predatory practices with waitlist fees, I believe it was $1,000, which was a, seemed very much an astronomical amount at the time. I was told that they were not going to give it to me back. Luckily, I got some good advice from someone older than me to file a claim with Small Claims Court, so I was able to actually get it mediated and get the money back, but only because I had somebody tell me to do that. So I think it also preys on people's lack of knowledge or empowerment about how to kind of fight against these. So anyway, thank you for everybody who's put work into this, the Renters Commission, advocates in our community, councilmembers Harrison and Redina, and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Councilmember Watson.
Co-sponsoring this ordinance means a lot to me because I've experienced these fees here in Ann Arbor when I was looking for an apartment, and I know how prevalent they are. These fees are an undue burden for people with low incomes, students, and people using housing assistance or veterans benefits. This is especially relevant because Michigan just banned source-of-income discrimination in laws sponsored by Jeff Irwin and supported by the entire House and Senate delegation from Wasna County. Thank you to the residents who came to council today to talk about their experiences, having to pay fees at multiple apartments on a time crunch just to ensure having a place to live. I also appreciate the comments from social workers and others who have had to guide people through the housing process. As you heard today from commentators, this is an initiative that came together with support from Ann Arbor residents, the renters commissioners, and council liaisons, Councilmember Harrison and Redina. Thank you for your work and advocacy on this issue, and I'm grateful as well to the attorney's office for the clear language in the ordinance. This will be an improvement for renters.
Councilmember Malik.
Some of you know, Ward 2 brings the economists to the table. So as someone with a background in economics, it has been a core tenet of my education, that complete, perfect information when making a rational decision is always the best-case scenario. Complete, perfect information is, of course, rarely possible in reality. However, increased transparency, as made possible through this proposed ordinance that allows would-be residents to compare apartments to each other, apples to apples, without hidden, unclear, or non-refundable pre-tenancy fees, moves us closer to that complete, perfect information situation. Paying for rent is likely the largest household budget item for most renters, and is almost certainly so for young students in our town. Adding this important ability to compare prices across apartments without unclear or straight-up deceptive or straight-up deceptive fees adds much-needed transparency and certainty. I want to thank all of my colleagues who worked hard to craft this agreement, and members of the public who spoke and emailed on it. I sadly am not a co-sponsor of it, mostly because I don't yet know how to do that as a new council member. But I look, I guess I'm supposed to just ask, so I'm happy to, please, add me as a co-sponsor. But either way, I look forward to voting in favor of it, all the same. Thank you.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I just want to express gratitude to all my colleagues who've worked on this and spoken so eloquently to its importance, as well as hearing from the public and their need for this. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. It's as simple as that. And again, really just to recognize how much work the Renters Commission has done. For a new commission, it's going full steam, and I look forward to seeing what else is on the journey.
Councilor Gauzy Edwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank, I know this is getting a little bit redundant, but I want to thank my wardmate and councilmember Cynthia Harrison and all the other co-sponsors of your fantastic, just for your fantastic work on this. And I also want to thank all the people in the room, like all the tenants and the people who have just been consistently organizing, like that advocacy matters. And it scares folks, right, who are on the renter side or the leasing side, who come in here and kind of just spew lies about why these waitlists are needed with hundreds of dollar fees, which we know they're not. I'm also, you know, I'd also like to be added as a, as a co-sponsor. I think that a, you know, an ordinance like this really helps to mitigate the harm of people who are just negatively disproportionately impacted all the time by our lack of housing in this community. I also want to highlight that an ordinance like this helps to emphasize the importance of us advocating to our state representatives for things like rent control, or for example, for the, there was a package of bills that was introduced to empower tenant rights during the lame duck session that did not get a hearing, including a bill that was introduced by Representative Kari Renegans from Ann Arbor that was to allow local municipalities, like our own, to decide laws around rent stabilization. So reach out to your state reps and take this advocacy to the next level. Thank you.
Councilmember Redina.
Thanks. Well, I know that, based on the comments tonight, I'm not expecting this to be overly controversial. There is one item that I wanted to address directly because it's probably the piece I've received the most questions about, which is the one fee that is still allowed pre-tenancy, which, the $50 refundable application fee. I will note, I was actually originally in a position where I wanted to ban that as well, but I was ultimately convinced through some conversations with some of the smaller landlords in town about the disproportionate impact that it has on them. And so the reason that, that, you know, there is still a cost that goes into processing applications, some of the landlords, particularly the larger ones, are charging hundreds of dollars for that application fee. We know that that's more than covering their costs to process that application, but a lot of the landlords are using kind of the software to process it, particularly some of the smaller landlords, and so they, they express some struggle with, with continuing to cover those costs. Again, you know, I would argue that there are very few other business models where you, you don't pay to go into a store, even if you don't buy something. But the reason that we particularly made, we limited that pretty low, but then also made it refundable, was because one of the things that I think was also happening and that we saw happening was landlords taking an abundance of applications, knowing that they probably didn't have that same quantity of apartments. And so this is an effort to actually make sure that landlords are not, that they're being honest with tenants when they come and apply, to say like, hey, you're probably not going to get in here, we're going to have very little turnover this year, rather than taking a $200 or $300 application fee, pocketing it, and then telling them months later that they're not going to have an apartment. So that's why making this refundable after 60 days was really critical if we were going to keep it in there. And so I just wanted to address that because it is one of the pieces that I got the most questions about.
Further discussion? For my part, what you all said? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DC1, resolution to approve a legal services agreement with Dyke Magusett P LLC relative to Jennifer Alexa, Jeff Malone, Tim Rugg, and City of Ann Arbor litigation, the amount of $300,000. Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of DC1. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. DS1, resolution to approve new fees for the public sale of the city flag. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Gauzy Edwin. Discussion, please, of DS1. Councilmember Briggs.
Which I'm very excited about, and I think it's a great new flag. I did have a question. I think it's evident within the memo itself, but the charge for the large city flag, $65, makes sense. $10 does seem a little high for this, and so it says that we're, you know, it's the cost to produce it, but I'm just curious if we're going to continue sort of shopping around for potentially lower-cost options, and if something might be brought back to us, because I can't imagine, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe there's a huge rush for this, but...
Ms. Boojard.
So the flags were purchased by Public Services after the flag design was approved and provided to the clerk's office, and I did base the fees on the cost that was already, you know, accrued to procure the flags. So I'm happy, once we go through the stock, to, you know, consider a different vendor, or of course, it would be council's discretion to lower the fee, but that, that is the rate that would recover the costs that have already been spent.
Yeah, it makes sense to me in terms of the current cost. I just hope that we might look maybe for a slightly smaller parade flag that might cost a little less, that might get it out more broadly in our community.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. We have the pleasure of a closed session today.
No, thank you, Mayor.
We have before us the clerk-supported communications petitions and referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the clerk's report? Moved by Councilmember Gauzy Edwin, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. Other communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you, Mayor.
In the absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Or adjourned?